Evening. My name is Eric Lenstrom, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetland Meeting for the Town of Monroe. Today is Wednesday, September 10th, and the time is 6:44 PM. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in visible liberty and justice.
I will take a roll call of the members of the Commission and staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting. Please answer here or present, starting with myself, Eric Lenstrom, Chairman here. Ryan Kelly, Vice Chairman, is not here. Rick Smith?
Here.
Jim Stewart?
Here.
Benjamin Savia is not here. He will be joining us via phone later. Secretary, I'm sorry, Paul Fernandez?
Here.
Mark Zamera is not here. Kathleen Gallagher, Planning and Zoning Administrator?
Yeah.
And Andrew Brodmann, Inland Wetland Enforcement Officer?
Here.
Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetland Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses within the Town of Monroe. Please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, you will automatically be muted and unable to unmute yourself. If you wish to speak during the public participation portion of the meeting, please use the raise hand function. If you are participating via telephone, press star nine to activate the raise hand. Staff will announce your name and unmute you when it is time, when it is your turn to speak. The video feature has been disabled for public participation. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title, if applicable, at the outset of each occasion, such that each person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body are participating remotely shall be by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meeting, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the Commission during which and after which the Commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask the applicants, keep their presentation as concise as possible. The Commission will then review town staff and other independent comments. Thank you. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments be made to the Chair or Commission. After any all comments pro, in opposition, or of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct, or a time limit of three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new material is entered in as evidence or testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland wetlands-related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow a similar format, with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting follows our published agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
Chairman, I'd just like to let you know that I am here.
Let the record show that Commissioner Savia has joined.
At what time is it?
6:47.
6:45.
Okay. At this time, we'd like to ask if there are, for general public participations, or anybody in chambers that would like to speak in a general nature? Nothing before us this evening? Anyone online?
Nobody online.
Okay. Moving on to regulated activities. IWR 2025-03, file number 1525155, Richards Drive. Remediation to restore previously cleared wetlands and URA on two properties per IWV-2025-04.
This application is for a remediation plan. You have this in your packets. The homeowner has put together the remediation plan with a little bit of guidance from myself. His narrative is pretty extensive, and you saw the plan. He had removed a total of 37 trees, and his remediation plan calls for 30 trees, 37 trees again, and additional shrubs. If you'll remember, this plan was, the violation was on both his property and Town of Monroe property. So he's come together with this remediation plan to present to you, and the only comment I had, Ken?
What's different? We let through this already.
What's different is the last meeting was not, the meeting was never started, so we are
This is a, this is a
This is a recap. This is a recap of the
Changes.
Nothing has really changed from last time, it's just
So nothing on this plan has changed. The one thing, the one comment I had on this plan was the size of trees. He is asking to put in 15-gallon trees as opposed to two- or three-inch caliber trees. I think it's both a financial decision as well as the logistics of getting two, three-inch caliber trees down there without using machinery.
Right, less equipment, less
Less equipment, less, less impact.
How much money differences do you think would be?
Say again.
How much money?
Uh, no. To go from 15-gallon trees to that many trees, it's probably the difference of about $5,000 or so. But it's really more a matter of the impact that
I totally get that.
Yes. So his plan, I think his plan is, you know, is a good answer to the remediation for the violation that he created, and he's willing to move forward with it. And at the last meeting, you were motioning to process the remediation plan administratively.
Yep. I think, are we still all on board with that?
Sir. He worked with you.
He worked with me, yeah, yep.
Motion to process the plan administratively for IWR 2025-035025155, Richards Drive.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Aye. Make sure it's a ten minutes.
Alright, sounds like it's unanimous.
On that note, before we move on to the next thing, any conditions of the approval that you want to see on there? My conditions are going to be that it gets done, I'll put a date on it, monitor the trees. Wetland markers are already on the plan. Is there anything additionally that you want for conditions of approval?
Okay, sorry.
Good.
One year? Yeah.
Good?
Good.
Okay. Now, moving on to our regular meetings. ZCC/RAA 2025-01, file number 10311603, Monroe Turnpike. This application is in front of Planning and Zoning Commission. As part of the application, the report is required from the Inland Wetland Commission on the implication of the zone change. If you remember from our meeting that wasn't recorded, we spent quite a bit of time going through this whole thing. I think we can go through the highlights again for everybody, make sure that we're all still clear on it.
I have one item for the applicant as you guys get ready. I don't know if you're aware, there's several scams going through the state of Connecticut where you will receive a request for a wire transfer in order to get approved. This is for you and everybody else. We do not ask for wire transfers. They are pretty good at stripping our data from, he wants to share. They're pretty good at stripping our data, so this goes for both inland wetlands and for planning and zoning. I think you guys have already gotten one, right? Do not pay the wire transfer. We will never ask for you for money in that way. You pay a fee upfront. There's no additional fee at the end. We're going to have to start making that announcement at every meeting. So far, we've had four.
Really?
And they're all
Just been in all other towns too.
Oh, other, just from Monroe, just for me.
You, what is happening in other towns?
People call you yelling, "What the hell, you're having a problem?"
People do. People once called me and was like, "I got your email." And then, "Why email? Why didn't you send an email?" And then he goes, "Oh, this is a fishy email." Just now that I look at it. So, yeah, there's been four sent out from my email within the last month, and it's definitely going on throughout the state. So.
And I'm sure that the cyber police are about ready to get them. I hope so. No, I really have
I go to IT. IT will block the email address for me. You know, we do everything that we can on our end, but, yeah, they're, they're ranked it right now.
For George.
Evening, everyone. Excuse me, for the record, Donald Lou Spitt Jr., professional engineer with an office at 56 Green Circle in Seymour. Here tonight, representing the property owners, Bruce Mondo and Bruce Mondo Jr. Bruce Mondo Jr. is here with me, and Bruce Mondo Jr. is also the applicant for this application, and his cousin, James Mondo, is here with us. Funny you should mention that, Kathleen, but the applicant did receive an email about two days ago with a request for a wire transfer of about $5,000. So, luckily enough, he, it's like, this doesn't sound right, and he looked at the email, it wasn't from the department, so he followed up with the department, but thanks for that, comes up, I'll keep an eye on it as well. I'm here tonight to present a site plan referral. The site plan has been submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a zoning tax amendment. The site plan is for 1603 Monroe Turnpike. I have a colored map with that up on the screen. Route 34 is at the top of the screen, upper right, Route 111 on the right-hand edge of the screen. Halfway River is in the blue shading here, under Route 34. The unnamed water course that comes through property, off of the property, back on the property, under the railroad, up into the former Stevenson Lumber property, is shown here on the plan. The proposal before planning and zoning is to create an equipment, storage, and parking area on the northerly parcel that was formerly 1615 Monroe Turnpike. The proposal is to construct a large retaining wall that ranges from zero feet in height up to 22 feet in height along the westerly, northern, and northeastern boundaries of the property. That retaining wall has got about a 15-foot separation between the unnamed water course and the retaining wall, and about a 30-foot separation from halfway river and that retaining The purpose of this application is for the applicant to come into conformance with the zoning regulations. There's, we've had a little bit of a journey to get here. There's some violations on the property back from 2017, 2018 regarding the wetlands violations, regarding some piping of the unnamed water course adjacent to the back building. That was done in late 80s or the 90s. There was some unauthorized activity down in the lower section around the unnamed water course. EverSource Energy had gone in and replaced the culvert on your old web road that we had nothing to do with, but EverSource Energy did that. There's EverSource transmission towers all the way up here to the right, Route 111. There's a set of towers down here by the unnamed brook, and then the lines go further up at the hill. Our property is bisected by Old Web Road. The applicant applied to the town for a continuation of the public use of Old Web Road and was granted that. So that, Old Web Road now the private use, private right-of-way from Mr. Wiley lives up in the back here, his driveway comes down on Old Web Road, he can still have a private, private right-of-way over that Old Web Road, so he'll still be traversing that. Part of the project is to take Old Web Road and to widen that out to a 24-foot wide roadway to access the parking area. Reason for that is the site has been designed for a WB50 tractor-trailer truck so that they can drive straight into the property, come down, make a loop in and around the parking area, and then continue back all the way back until we run away. The, there's two existing buildings on the property. Those will remain. There is no new building construction proposed. And then there is some storage areas all the way out here in the west that will remain, but there will be some vegetation, some buffer vegetation that has, has to be replaced over that area. The other violation from wetlands regarding is associated with activities within the 140 up to the view area of this unnamed water case, there's currently storage, equipment storage going on in that area. As I said, the violations date back to 2017, 2018. The applicant is, has been working to address these violations since then. Number lines that have been done to get us to this point is the endement of Old Web Road, the merger of the two properties, 1603 and 1615, the properties have been merged. Had to go to FEMA to address, we get a letter of amendment from FEMA to address the flood mapping on the parcel, because the flood mapping was incorrect. And we had to apply to EverSource before we could apply to you. We were told we had to apply to EverSource to get EverSource's approval for what we wanted to do within the easement, which we did that, and EverSource granted us a permit for that. And then we were also needed to acquire a small parcel of land to resolve an encroachment that had popped up, so. And then we throw COVID in, mix there
Where's that land, sir? You said you acquired land, where did you acquire land?
Needed to acquire land to address an encroachment with the piping that was installed in this area.
Was that because of legal action, or?
It ended up going to court, right, it settled in courts. The Mondos acquired an irregular-shaped parcel of land from Mr. Wiley to address this encroachment that was on the property. Why I can't zoom in there. There was a, let's show up here, there was a irregular-shaped, irregular-shaped piece of property in this area here, this corner over here, that had to be acquired from Mr. Wiley to address this encroachment.
Was it done for this project, or recently, or was it to, to fix the violations previously?
It's, it's, right, was all park and parcel addressing all the violations of the property with that pipe, the pipe was off of the property, addressing the violations associated with that pipe to get us to where we are today, submitting this plan for the zone change and addressing the, by all of the violations.
That pipe work is a violation, is one of the listed violations.
So, again, I'm not sure I caught it. Did you purchase it recently, within the last year, from Mr. Wiley?
I don't know the exact date, a few years ago, three, four, five, maybe two, three years ago, that time we were done. Before I was involved in the project in the spring of 23, Mr. Mondo Jr., you can't answer that, was basically handled by Mr. Mondo Senior.
Okay, you can continue with your blame and excuses of the town being responsible for, for the delay.
We have never blamed the town.
No, but you talked about Richard Schultz. Richard Schultz, an esteemed engineer in this town. Last time you had said, hey, we, you know, we're
We're not going to talk about last time. Let's, let's stay focused on this time. Let's just, let's get through this.
So, we had talked last time, and part of the issues were the, why that unnamed stream had got a pipe. And we had talked about the illicit discharges that were being made into that stream from upstream, and the odors and the fumes that were coming up from the stream, and that was why that was full, that was why that was piped. It was not present at that point in time. And then in 2000, of course, new road, capacity of that, and information was submitted to the town, and a additional 36-inch storm drain was installed on top of the 48-inch storm drain that was originally installed. So, the calculation had been examined and approved by engineers. We're here tonight to get our zoning into place, and then once we get our zoning regulations into place, then our intention is to come back to this Commission for the 40-scale detailed plans, address the violations, correct the violations, do some additional planting to address that. It's not shown on this drawing, but as part of the proposed expansion in the northerly area, there will be a subsurface stormwater management system complying with the town's MS4 requirements that will address stormwater management. Well, this is only the section from the proposed development. I think that was about it. The site is served with an existing well, existing septic system that's proposed to remain. We have a secondly positive referral back to the zoning department, so the zoning commission, so that they will adopt the zone change, and then we will go forward with remediation plans to address the invasives. There's a good chunk of invasives down in this corner over here, around this portion of the unnamed stream, but that is within the EverSource easement, so. Properties, the Mondos have committed to addressing those invasives.
So, it's my understanding that for, we're not really looking at the specific details of the plan right now. It's just more concept to allow it to go to planning and zoning so they can approve the change of zone, then they can present a more specific detailed plan back to us to then go through all the specifics of what
Yes, and I will add some details to that. So it's not just a zone change in the sense of, oh, it was an I-2 zone, and then it changes to a B-1 zone, and those have very specific setbacks, landscape buffers in the zoning regulations that everybody applies to. This is a special design development district. This is a special development district, which is, they are setting their own setbacks, uses, things of that nature for this parcel. So because they're in our Main Street Design District, and they meet all the access requirements and things of that nature, they can apply for it the short term as an SDD, a special development district. So I added as an exhibit to the record my planning and zoning review letter for everybody to see, because in that, one, I give a pretty extensive history of the project, but two, I give the chart of what they are looking to change the regulations for, and I will just highlight, the landscape buffer front yard is typically required to be 20 feet. They are requesting for it to go down to zero feet. The landscape buffer residential zone boundary is 20 feet. They are looking to knock that down to 15 feet. And the internal driveways for parking and load to residential districts is typically 30 feet. They are not putting a parking area in the rear behind the building, but they are putting a driveway for access to the outdoor storage, and that landscape buffer in that area is 15 feet. So, the things to point out that as it relates to inland wetlands is, I think my concerns are, obviously, you're at the Boys Halfway River, that's 150 feet, not 100 feet, as it relates to your buffer that's in your purview to review. So when we're thinking about the encroachment of what they're doing into that area, it's not just 100 feet, it's 150 feet. We, because we're so close to Newtown, did have to notice to both COGS, MetroCOG and WestCOG, and WestCOG did write planning and zoning a letter, which we unfortunately got right before the meeting, so it hasn't had a chance, before the planning and zoning meeting, so it hasn't a chance to circulate, where they have very distinct concerns with taking up this much area within the repairian buffer, and said they can't recommend in general for that to occur. However, they do also say that they see the benefit related to all the stormwater improvements that are going to happen with this, and we're going to be able to collect the stormwater, you know, in a positive way that's not happening at the moment. What I want to then come back to is, again, the history of this project. So they have a valid special exception permit for both buildings. So for the building in the front and the building in the rear, and for this use, what they use it as now, which is an excavation contractor. They're in a business district right now, which does not permit excavation contractors. We permit, like, we call them contractors trade establishments, so plumbers, electricians, and things like that, but we do not permit someone that's going to stockpile materials and soil and fill and things of that nature on-site. So for them to be able to expand their use, we're making them come in for a special development district. That's what's triggering this. Their zoning violations include outdoor storage areas, both to the left sheet, so back behind the building. They currently go to the property lines. They have a pretty extensive ledge drop-off on one side, but on the other side, they're basically going to the property line and where they have their outdoor storage across the way on what was formerly 1615 Monroe Turnpike. They currently are storing materials there right now, and have been, you can tell from the aerials, you know, for many years. So as part of this, you know, they are still going more into the repairian buffer area, they're taking out more trees, but they're already utilizing, you know, that area illegally. It's a zoning violation. But so as part of this, they came to Planning and Zoning Subcommittee about a year ago and asked Subcommittee, are you going to make us remediate all the violations, or can we come in for our improvements and remediate the citations and violations at the same time? And Planning and Zoning had said you can come in and do both at the same time. So they have been talking to staff for about a year and a half, and I do want to give them credit for coming in last spring. They kind of laid everything out on the table, and we said, your FEMA zone's still showing, you know, in an area, and things like that. So they have been working for the last year and a half with, at least myself and James DeMayo, so current staff, you know, to rectify some of these things. I don't think it's been excav, like, I don't think it's been expediated through the process, but I do believe that they've been going at a normal pace. but I do believe that they've been going at a normal pace as it relates to getting their FEMA map changed, dealing with ever-source, dealing with all those things. They've been making progress. They've been keeping us up to date on the progress. And right now, they're trying to combine the both. So, what you are approving as per the special development district is this planning concept. So, you know, as it relates to it, the details of it will be like the planting plan, the lighting plan, dark sky compliant, you know, what they're using. But in concept, if you create a positive referral, you are saying that it, in its general form, you know, is is acceptable, you know, per your review. So, again, the two big areas are obviously how close they are to the Boys Halfway River. And for me, the 15 feet behind the outdoor storage area. When you have that small of an area, how can you best get your most bang for your buck in those areas? They're also battling some slopes. So, I know this commission doesn't normally request an extensive invasive species plan. I wouldn't highly recommend that you do that on here. There's a ton of invasion species on site. So, the question is, is, you know, first off, is there enough room to, you know, mitigate to the point that you, you know, will be satisfied and think that's appropriate? And then two, just making sure that, you know, you guys have an idea of how you think that can both, that can best be used. And I would, yeah, really suggest we, you know, really think about invasive species on the site. Maybe do a monitoring plan for three years, five years, you know, what you guys think annually after that to make sure that, you know, because that would have a really big impact to be able to get those invasive species out, plant them with something native and then make sure they stick and make sure they, they monitor them for those.
We can't impose that tonight.
You can't impose that tonight, but I just want to make sure that as they have it, you know, laid out right now, you think you can work within this conceptual design. That doesn't mean you don't have the opportunity to tweak some things and change some things and add some conditions, but as it currently sits. You can't, like, you can't come back when they come in for an IWC and say, no, I don't want anything shown on that, you know, 1615 side, that side of the driveway. Really, you're approving this generally. You're creating a positive or negative referral to the, you're not approving anything or denying anything. You're writing a positive, negative referral with some notes if you feel like it is appropriate related to the conceptual.
There is some property along Route 111 that's relatively flat that they're not utilizing.
What area are you talking about?
Yeah, right there.
There's ever-source poles and part of that location.
The two ever-source poles. So, the ever-source easement is here. The north edge and the south edge is down here. The set of poles that are up on the bank and come along down to 111, the set of poles up here. And the next poles are down lower here.
So, they have to provide access to those upper poles. So, there's an area that that just can't really, that's already disturbed.
So, the access to the upper poles for ever-source and what they, ever-source does what they want. You can't control them. Neither can the town. They come in and do what they want. But this area that's up here is ever-source's access to those upper poles. Off the curb cut here on the Montos Drive.
But you have 55 feet, not just 55 feet this way, but if you turn it, you alternate way, you're about 55 feet away from those poles at least.
Yeah, but between the brown part and the brown part is a super steep hill.
Yeah, I understand that. That's what I'm saying is, is why don't we utilize a flatland instead of, you know, and there is a 150-foot wetland setback that goes across there, right there. Yeah. So, can we get more onto the other properties, what I'm, what I'm.
This is State Highway.
Yeah.
State Highway right of ways. This is a steep slope from Route 34 down to the property.
Yeah, I understand. It's a 20-foot retaining wall. What I'm saying is, can't you do something in this area here? Getting away from the river and the low elevation and let's, let's fill for you the cost.
So.
Well, no, they need to balance the cup fill. And I believe that is part of the reason you guys picked the elevation that you're at now is because you're trying to balance the cup fill on site.
Part of these two ever-source poles that are up here, there are underground rounding wires that extend 50 or 60 feet down that slope, which are shown by these squinny lines. And those cannot be disturbed. So, we have started our grading west of where those, where those rounding wires are. So, starting to bring these onsite, we can move here. Got a lot just to get to this elevation and basically keep this as far to the north as we can. You know, the design again is predicated on the ability to bring a WD-50 tractor trailer truck into the property to make a loop to get that up. So, that's kind of how we came to this, you know, the width of tractor WD-50 tractor trailer, which is the terminal template is shown lightly on this plan. That the WD-50 tractor trailer truck can loop around that site and then come back up the driveway.
So, that's convenient for the driver, but these drivers are really good. I've seen drivers do amazing things with, I worked in a asphalt when I was a kid, and these guys could park on a dime.
Currently, the truck, the trailer truck flap that has to back in from, you know, there's nothing on the site to allow that.
Zach would not accept like a K-turn in that where they're showing parking. Zach wants to see a vehicle being able to really properly maneuver through that area. Zach, myself.
Oh, Zach, Zach.
Yes, we would want to see it in there. We wouldn't accept some sort of crazy K-turn with a vehicle that large. I will say that.
What we're going to do is see if we can shift it as far away from that, that water course as possible. Keeping in mind, we understand you have the utility poles that you have to work around. So, is there a way to move it around a little bit, maybe change the shape, the orientation, to allow you to still drive the truck around, but shift it away a little bit? So, see, see if there's an opportunity to maybe shift some things around.
Just to follow up, to back on a little bit from what Kathleen said. Kathleen's correct. We've been working with her for a year and a half on this. And I've been working with Rick Schultz, and we were working with Rick Schultz on it for the year before that while we were still here.
So, in our last meeting when we were discussing this, I know we were concerned about the violations and we didn't want them to be contingent solely on this project moving forward. And not that we could tie it specifically into our recommendation, but I remember the applicant came forward and said regardless, they were going to take steps to correct those violations. So, if you don't mind kind of reiterating that for this meeting, just give us that reassurance that, again, regardless of whether this project moves forward or not, you still have plans to address the current violations that are there.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, if we don't move forward with the project, which is not even a thought, I've invested so much to get to this point that, that should be an indication that we're pushing forward. But for some reason, that the project was to fall through over and a half and we addressed the violations separately.
Right, I get it. Thank you. Please state your name.
It was Mondo Jr.
Thank you. I'll start again. Do you have any additional?
That was the same question I was going to ask. Thank you, Eric. Appreciate the response.
I am just concerned that if you had thought about putting so much investment into the property that you would have dealt with these violations on a timely basis and had records from Richard Schultz saying, okay, I'll accept this or that. You know, I just know him as a competent man and I, I'm surprised this violation from 2017 and 18 is still on the books and now because, you know, you have to get our zoning change, you've come before us, I, you know.
Do you have any questions?
No, I guess I don't.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Commissioner Sabia, do you have any questions?
At this time, I do not.
Okay. Then do we need to make a motion for a pass or?
So, you need to provide planning and zoning a letter of your referral. So, it could be a positive referral, it could be a negative referral. Honestly, it could probably be a neutral referral if you wanted to, just saying that, like, you don't have enough information related to the litigation, you know, to feel like you could make a referral at this time. You could do a positive referral, but with a listing of what your concerns are, which is the location of the wall, you know, is the riparian buffer going to be up at this time, you know, things of that nature, but that you're going to revisit those items during the IWC application. We just need planning and zoning to use a letter from you guys of, because even if you give a negative referral, that doesn't mean they won't approve it or they'll deny it. They just use that to take that into their consideration.
I'm okay with a tepid recommendation for approval, you know, with some, I don't know if you can call them conditions, but with some areas of concern.
Yeah, there's some areas of concern that you want to bring over to us.
We'll come up with that list right now if we have.
Yeah, come up with that list.
We need language. And I would like to see no approval whatsoever, but we just need more information. That's what I feel like I really think.
You're not giving approval. You're just giving.
I know, but we don't have to give approval. So, why should we? It's different. It'd be different if the violations were addressed and there was some, you know, but they're not. There's no plan for the violations to be addressed.
It's not like they can address the violations given their business. Correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, can they address the zoning and the wetlands issues given the current zone area and their, and their current business model?
And given their current business model, no, but like, they could put everything back to what was approved.
I'm just saying they could do it, but then it means closing, closing up shop and going away.
Getting rid of their outdoor storage area. That means getting rid of the storage and, you know, and the other space. And again, I can attest to what happened before we were here, but they came in a year and a half ago. They did go to Planning and Zoning Commission. We were, staff was willing to cooperate, you know, to come up with a way to deal with the violations, but also see their improvements. They did have a year and a half's worth of work to do to get themselves, you know, because the way the FEMA was written. They also were in litigation for who owns the driveway with the neighbors in the rear, which took, I'm assuming years. I don't know when it first happened. I just read the rendering of decisions. But that would have affected where the property lines were, where the setbacks were, you know, where all those other items were. So, once they figured out they technically owned the road, that's when they could really holistically start, you know, designing. So, there, there was several years of issues that had to be done. And if you look in our wetland citation file, they have not been given an update on their citation fees in those seven years. So, the way that we function now, because we have a staff that is extraordinarily competent, both our WEO and our ZEO, is when they issue a citation, they will issue a letter in six months or in a year giving them their total amount of citation fees. And then they have the opportunity to appeal it, to go to a citation officer. And oftentimes in that meeting is where they come up with a solution, agreement to what the fees are. They'll say, hey, we'll drop the fees to X if you do X, Y and Z in six months. I, to our records, and I don't know if they have anything different, no one in staff has given them that in the last seven years. So, they have not had the opportunity to appeal this to the citation hearing officer in a way that, in my opinion, would have been fair and appropriate. Now, they, he's the seventh WEO since that violation, you know, had gotten written. So, there is a little bit of just like lack of continuity with staff. So, they're actually the ones that came to me and said, this is what we want to do. We have violations on site. Can we think of a path forward, you know, to do this? So, I do feel like, again, I can only really attest to what I see in the record in the last year and a half, but I don't believe they've had the opportunity to appeal this. And now we do give applicants the opportunity to appeal their citations when we do it.
But I do believe that they should have come to, come to you and tried to get rid of, rid of the violations before they decided to go ahead and make improvements. I don't have a problem with improvements. I just think if you're going to give a tepid response, we go to, we go to the debate. We say that, you know, we're now no call on the field. You know, no, no, no approval, no positive referral. I think no referral is what we do because we, really, I don't know how we do that without more information about this and more information.
One more time quickly and review those areas that you have concerns.
That are specific for us, not, not.
So, behind the building, there's an outdoor storage area and two brown items.
Yes.
So, right now, that, they're basically using that whole area. So, as part of planning and zoning, we're making them pull that outdoor storage back to be in compliance with the setbacks, which is a 30-foot setback. Their driveway, however, is within that 30 feet, but that's permitted because they're not using it as a parking. Internal driveways can't, you know, for parking areas, can't be within that area, but they're just really using that for storage for the back. But they're only leaving themselves now 15 feet between the edge of the driveway and the property line. So, you only have 15 feet to deal with whatever landscape buffer that's going to be. From a planning and zoning perspective, I care about screening. From a inland wetland perspective, you care about, you know, buffering that areas because, you know, although it's not directly next to, where's the, where's the buffer for the wetland line in this area?
The 104 review area is here.
Yeah, and it goes to the right, right?
Currently, this area here is also used for storage. As Matt showed on this map, it highlighted as a disturbed area to be restored.
Okay.
That area within 100 feet of the unnamed streams.
So, that 15 feet is right outside of the buffer, but I mean, again, it's still part of this whole area. And then as you move to the right and you get past that line, yeah, just making sure. I do appreciate the fact they're restoring part of that area, but, you know, I do also care about, you know, all the area within that, that area. So, you know, they're pulling back on a lot of that for the outdoor storage, but I still think you're dealing with, you know, a limited, you know, amount. So, again, how do you get the most bang for your buck? How do you, with, you know, with the space that you have? And then, of course, you know, the area of the wall right up against the Boys Halfway River, which I would say is regionally what the region, what West COG is most concerned about. That wall was actually closer and planning and zoning made them pull it back a little bit. So, I think they're at 30, 30 feet. Is that wall 30 feet from the property line? Not from the river, but from the actual property line. How, how far away is that wall from the property line?
The wall is, this, this, just to clarify, Kathleen, this is Halfway River, not Boys Halfway.
Oh, sorry, the Halfway River. Yes, thank you.
So, 30 feet, the property line is the middle of Halfway River, the 30-foot setback to residential zone is this line right here.
So, you can see just at the corner, that's.
Corner change.
Yeah, they're hitting it right at that corner. So, they were even further into it and then we had asked them to bring that corner back out, which they did. But that area from the wall, that's a 15 to 20-foot wall, but great changes a little bit in that area. But you still have a slope going from that to the Halfway River. So, you know, again, when we're talking about that space, you also are now kind of limiting some of the plants that you can have on it and things like that because you're just dealing with a steep slope. It's hard for access and for maintenance, you know, to be able to keep up with it as it relates to like, you know, disturbing, you know, going in for invasive species.
What's the elevation change between the brown area and the?
There's probably some existing plants that are already there.
You're looking for the elevation change from the bottom, from the bottom of the wall to the Halfway River?
Yes. Right. What's elevation change?
So, the bottom of the wall is, here's, here's elevation 136 over here. 34, 132. To the river.
38, 26, 24. 16 feet.
16-foot drop.
Yes.
16 feet over.
In 30 feet.
30 feet. So, it's.
Less than 30.
Right, that's.
That's deep. So, when we think about that, that affects what trees we can plant there just because of the way the root ball gets, you know, put into the hill. You also probably have existing trees there. But again, when we're thinking about like, what are things, when we get to the details we could do, you could have them do a tree inventory of that area, really figure. you could have them do a tree inventory of that area, really figure out what's there, you know, and, and species that makes sense that you really want to keep, keep. Um.
And I think that's why Commissioner Smith was seeing is there a way to, the more you can shift that away from that corner helps in a lot of ways. So.
Because to the north, it, it also goes up in altitude and the halfway river goes through culverts. So if those culverts get blocked or there, the lake sore is right on the other side there.
Yeah, absolutely.
If, if there's a lake sore problem or a covert problem, then that whole area that's in the lower elevation, it'd be great if, if more of it was available for backup of the river that doesn't get into people's residences and streets and, and, you know, other things. So.
You can also see they're using part of that area for stormwater. Um, they have a, a, a swale that's there, you know, that's an area that's not going to be able to be planted. You know, so as we think about some of these things, like, yeah.
Right. So I think that's what we're, we're saying, can, can you get a little creative? Changing some of the orientation of things and keeping in mind, and I know we got those utility poles to have to, to kind of work around, but.
Okay. So we could put that in the letter.
And give them a heads up of like, do you want to see tree inventory along that whole way because you want to see the clock? Because if it's a bunch of Norway maples, you know, that's not going to do much for you, but, you know.
So the pretty few points. So this slope here is a stone stabilized slope.
Okay.
And there's nothing that was thrown on that slope that's large holders rippled up on that slope.
That's even more difficult to plant.
And, um, last year at this time, the stream did not crest the top of our side of the bank. It filled out through the opposite side of the bank, which is obviously a lower elevation than our side. So, um, based on last year's, storm event, it did not get to the top of the bank. This dark line here with the two dots in it is the 100-year flood limit per FEMA. That was just being corrected, amended, uh, January of this year. So we're in above the 100-year flood limit. We're outside of the flooding that had occurred last year.
You know, again, and I don't want to negate the benefit of the stormwater system. The stormwater management system is going to tremendously improve even from, you know, how do you utilizing the space? Now it's just, it's a balance between, you know, the repair and buffer and, you know, their, their use. How do you, what makes sense as a, as a balance of both those priorities?
The site survey, it doesn't show up on this plan, but the site survey did identify the trees in excess of 24, 26 inches or whatever in this, you know, inside.
I'd be curious to know what species those were because if they're like not that good of quality trees, I'd be curious to what species those were because if they're not that good of quality trees, I think that's uh, important. And if they, and if they are good quality trees, I also think that's important information.
So I, I, in order to give the positive, at least for me, I, I, I need a site visit. I'd want to see a little bit. This is great. I appreciate that you did all your work, Mr. Smith. But, uh, I, I, seeing the lay of the land makes a big difference to me and I just, um, this altitude, I don't know. I can't give a positive.
At the last meeting, what, what, we gave a positive referral. We gave a condition.
We did not get into the details of what that referral was.
We were concerned with, I think, the.
So, so I would make a positive referral, um, with the comments that the commission is, is concerned with, um, the ability of the applicant to provide adequate, um, buffer, invasive plant removal, um, replanting of the riparian.
Buffer.
Buffer, um, as well as the, uh, storage area to the rear of the property.
And again, we'll obviously still have an opportunity to provide more specific feedback.
Catch GPT, hit the button, see what comes up.
Exactly. So we'll, we'll be able to provide more specific.
Yeah. And I'm not saying they can't do it in the area that they have, like they can't make an impact. I'm just saying it's unknown at this time and that's the areas of concern that we want you guys to focus on. Have your landscape architect focus on those areas and those plants and give us as much detail as you can about the tree species that are there, how you can do it. Um, you know, why you're using this plant instead of that plant because it has, you know, more value, you know, associated with, uh, soil stabilization as well as, you know, being in the riparian buffer and, you know, things of that nature. This doesn't mean, oh, you just stick a bunch of natives in, like, we want to, we want to see something, you know, really thoughtful related to.
And obviously, when the time is right for site visits, we can.
Yeah, absolutely.
Get the time for us all to go out and take a look at it if necessary. So. So again, do we need, is this a motion or just draft a letter from staff?
Uh, I would say a motion because I don't think you're all in consensus. So I want to give people the opportunity.
Maybe.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion for a positive referral.
With conditions.
With conditions as stated. Do we have those conditions recorded?
Um, provide an adequate planting plan, um, that that addresses the riparian buffer, uh, invasive species removals and maintenance.
And monitoring.
Say again?
Monitoring.
Monitoring.
Right. Can we cut them off? Cut them off?
Anything?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion.
I meant my motion to include all those items.
Right. Okay. So we have a motion. Commissioner Stewart, do I have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And?
Mine. Okay. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner, was that a positive? Or was that an aye or a nay?
It was for opposed.
Opposed. Okay.
So pass the three.
Three, two.
Three, two. Okay.
Okay. Motion passes three.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming back. Over again. Okay. Moving on to bond releases. IWC 2017-05, file number 1068296 Garter Road. Proposal to release $2,500, uh, surety bond.
Uh, this was the, uh, construction of a single family home. The project is done. The site is stabilized. Staff has been out to do a final inspection. The site is stabilized and staff has no objection to releasing the said bond of $2,500.
Motion?
Motion to release the bond.
Oh, wait. Hold on, Mr. Commissioner.
I was going to put the motion out, so it's fine.
Okay. Do you want to second? You can second it.
I'll, I'll second. I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That's unanimous.
Oh, and it's still sharing?
Thank you.
Harry can't see who's talking. It makes it really difficult. So as soon as they're done, you wouldn't stop sharing screen.
Got you.
Okay. Now moving on to, uh, agent activities report.
Uh, we have some agent approvals. IAA 25-22, file number 1546 is 754 Main Street. Uh, this was a display area with a kitchen, a fire pit, paving, all within the upland review area. Uh, their appeal period ended on 8/20. Uh, I've already done a pre-construction inspection. Uh, there were conditions of the approval, which was, uh, uh, there's an existing, uh, catch basin and that is, uh, there's, uh, there's a landscape fabric in there to catch any sediment that might fall into the catch basins. That was the only, the condition of the approval. Uh, the project is well underway and they've started and they're, they have, uh, other inspections going on at the same time. IAA 25-24, file number 1550 is 45 Blanket Meadow Road. Uh, installation of an in-ground pool and associated stormwater management within the upland review area. I issued an agent approval on this. Uh, all site disturbance is at least 80 feet outside the wetland area. It's about 60 feet of established lawn going up to the woods. So, um, conditions of that approval were to put up silt fence uh, around the area of construction, put up, um, uh, wetland markers, uh, create a rain garden for stormwater retention and no backwashing into the wetlands. And install the, the wetland markers along the, the woods edge.
How long was the pool there?
How long is?
Yeah. When was it constructed?
Oh, it wasn't. And I'm, I'm issuing an agent approval.
Okay.
For the construction of that pool. Uh, also all, uh, excavated materials to be pulled out of the URA or hauled off site. Uh, issued an agent approval, IAA 25-25, file number 1551 is 108 Far Horizon Drive. This was, uh, this was in, in answer to a voluntary compliance letter. Uh, the homeowner installed a 12 by 16 storage shed. Uh, and they installed it within the upland review area and very close to the side property line. So it was both in, because they did it without any permits. It was both a zoning violation and a wetland violation. So I issued them a voluntary compliance letter and had them do an agent approval to put it where they want to put it. Um, their location, their proposed location is 50 feet away from the, uh, delineated wetlands. Uh, 30 of that is established lawn. And conditions of their approval were to install silt fence with pre and post-construction inspections, install four-inch gravel pad underneath the, uh, storage shed for stormwater management and wetland markers to be installed along the back lines so that they know where the wetlands are and 90 days to complete the project.
How close is it now?
It's going to 50 feet.
It's now.
Uh, right now, it's, it's still about 50 feet. My point was that they had no permit to put it there. So they moved it away from the, from the, uh, from, from the side property line to be, to come into zoning compliance and moved it, uh, not much further away than where it sits right now. Is there something you would like different?
I would have liked a little, little bit more. I mean, you're not really, it's, it's, you know.
Okay. It is, uh, so it's, it's 50 feet away from the markers and 30 feet of that is established lawn already?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
I'm trying to get an idea from you because if, if this comes up in the future, like I, I won't do the agent.
I, I know.
If it's something you want to see, I won't do an agent approval.
I'm not, no, I don't want to reverse anything that's been done. I'm just saying that in my mind, if they're moving it anyhow, if the fence is going to be there, then you should have chosen an area that was more appropriate, maybe another 20 feet or something that.
Okay.
Or ask them, where else, where else, you know.
We did look just, uh, we did look to get it out of the upland review area and that put it all the way to the very side of the house toward the front of the house. Uh, that would have gotten it out of the upland review area and then they wouldn't have had to go for, for a permit. Um, it's a storage shed.
Yeah, I understand.
It belongs in the backyard, but, uh,
but you store fluids out there and I don't know about you guys, but, um, I, I, you know, the plastic over time leaks. I've got, I've got a, I'm not going to go there, but I just would rather have it more than 50 feet. But.
Okay. So, which is fine. And, and we're good with the 50 feet that we have.
Yeah. You, you.
Okay.
Talk to them and they're going to go with voluntary compliance.
In the future, I just want, I, I just want guidance on to, like, as to what I should be bringing to you or what I should be denying. The, uh.
What is the current standard?
The, the current standard is anything outside 25 feet.
And, and it goes established lawn area?
In, in established lawn area. And it also, and it's also a matter of how much, uh, impact it's having. So if this was going to be a concrete pad where there would be excavation, um, I would think that that would have more impact. And, and if it, if it was 25 feet, even though my guidance is if it's outside the 25 feet, I could issue a, an agent approval on it. If it's 25 feet and it's, it's disturbance such as that, I'll still bring it to the commission. This is gravel on top of the ground. Um, I viewed it as, as, I, I viewed it as, as minimal impact. And I was okay with the 50 feet. If you'd like to see, if you, if you'd like to see projects like this, go to the IWC, I'm happy to do it. Just need the guidance.
Right. Well, I, I would have liked to have seen like 754 just, and I understand that, you know, but I just want to, you know, a presence with, with the people makes, makes them understand that, hey, this is serious, you know? And approval is important. And this had, this occurred through voluntary compliance and I don't have a problem with what you've done, but I'm saying, and, you know, I'm just trying to give you some guidance and I appreciate that you're asking, but we, we can move on.
Yeah. Um.
But I, I guess I'm not clear because I still want to be able to guide him right now. Anything more than 25 feet in a previously disturbed area or established lawn, we give him the discretion to do the approval. Is that still the guidance this commission?
I would say for residential.
For, yes, for residential.
Anything commercial goes to you regardless.
Goes to you no matter what. Yes. Sorry. That's the third condition for residential.
Right. I'm fine with that.
Thank you. Sorry.
Uh, there was one other thing I wanted to say about that. Oh, and in order for them to come into compliance and to get an agent approval permit for this, they did have to have their, uh, their, their wetlands delineated. So they did have to hire, uh, you know, a soil scientist to do that. Um, so it was just one extra thing they needed to do.
What's something like that cost?
Uh, I hear from residents, it could be anywhere from $1,500 to $2,000.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's not cheap.
It's not cheap.
It's not cheap. Which is probably.
And then you got to have someone survey it.
And you have to, well, yes. Yeah. Right. So by the time you're done.
You're spending more in the shed.
His shed, his shed wound up being, uh.
And not worth having.
Right. But he already had it there.
He already had it there. And now he had to move it. So.
I would have put it in the front yard.
Yeah.
When you weren't looking, I would have dragged it back.
I actually, no, that was.
You didn't say that.
You would not have done that. Um, no, that was, that was.
Yeah, I know, but I couldn't help myself.
That was a, that was a suggestion to them though, uh, if, if you. You have to, you, you have to get it out from where it is because it's within the upland review area and you don't have a permit to have it. If you don't want to go through the process, you need to get it outside the 100 feet. So that was an option to them. You could put it in your front, you could put it in your front yard.
Wetland, um, markers?
It wasn't.
Wetlands mapping.
It wasn't.
Well, let me get this straight. If they had moved it to the front yard or wherever, then they wouldn't have had to pay for the.
They would not have had to delineate wetlands. They would not have had to.
It is what it is. Thank you very much.
They wouldn't have had to do the application fee. They wouldn't have had to.
I hate to open my mouth, given where I'm going to be in about a minute, but it is, it is, um, a lot of work to, to meet the regulations. It's very expensive. Less so for me. But for the average person, it's really a lot of work to get a shed. And I would hate to see things get more difficult. Uh, if someone's trying to, to do things correctly, no? And if they're not, then they're going to just throw the shed back there. And if they get caught, they, they deal with it. But I think it's more important that people try to do it correctly and it gets some sort of review. And now his wetlands back there, you know, and it's in the lawn and it's 25 feet of lawn. Would I make people personally get it a wetlands analysis, a wetlands setback survey? I'd say, hey, there's 25 feet of lawn. I think personally, I think that's.
Okay.
And the truth is.
Yeah.
If they build a structure and it stays there for three years and you don't take legal action, so that doesn't mean sending them a letter. That means taking them to court. Is a permitted structure under planning and zoning.
Okay. Well, we didn't really need to publish that, but okay.
But the fact of the matter is, is we want.
We don't want people to get away with it and these people.
And do the right thing.
Right. And then, right.
And the reason for all of this discussion is because I come across this all the time. I'm doing, um, one's in front of me right now that, you know, it's a 12 by 26 storage shed and, you know, he's trying to get it 25 feet off of the wetlands. And I said, if you're, if you are doing, if you're digging and you're pouring a slab there, depend, if, if it's more than 25 feet away, if it's that kind of construction, I might have you go to the IWC and, and have you go to the commission. if it's that kind of construction, I might have you go to the I W C and, and have you go to the commission for this because it's impact. If it's gravel on top of the ground, I consider that less impactful. So now he's thinking about just putting it on a gravel dead. Is that correct? Are we all? Okay.
Okay, uh, moving on to enforcement.
Enforcement, I W V twenty twenty-four oh three, file number fourteen ninety-five, is sixty-eight East Village Road. I was actually out there just yesterday. The, this is the curb cut and, uh, we're all very well aware of this project. He's pulled all the material out of that area. He has seeded it. He's, uh, uh, sent me a label of the conservation seed mix that he used. Um, in addition to that, I failed to see the, uh, along the driveway, there was some debris on the, along the driveway. Yesterday, when I went, when I went out, I asked him about that. He cleaned it up yesterday.
He was there.
He was there. And he, and he took care of that right away. So, um, as far as I'm concerned on this, uh, once I see the vegetation and, and the site stabilized, I will lift the, uh, I'll issue a, a resolution. All right, and then I W V is another violation. Uh, I W V twenty twenty-five dash oh seven, file number fifteen forty-seven is one fifty-three Cottage Street. Uh, there's a lot of construction debris being deposited in either wetlands or upland review area. Site hasn't been, uh, delineated, so I'm not sure if it's actually in wetlands or if it's, uh, in just upland review area. But this started out, uh, they started doing a renovation project on this property. Uh, they had no permits, no building permits, no wetland permits, no zoning permits. Uh, so they started taking this house apart and they started putting all the, the debris um, along a, a drainage swell. It's not really an intermittent water course, maybe it's a drainage swell, uh, probably. This started with voluntary compliance, uh, the voluntary compliance letter. Uh, I was just gonna ask them to clean everything up. Um, the voluntary compliance letter went unanswered and I issued a vi, a violation. Uh, once I issued the violation, they came in, they answered to it. Um, since then, they've had a dumpster out there and I saw it loaded with debris. They've got a long way to go. There's still a lot and I'll just keep following up on it. And that takes care of the voluntary compliance on our next, uh, one oh eight Far Horizon. Uh, we've already talked about that.
So now moving on to the permitted use as of right.
Excuse myself, obviously.
It's I P U dash twenty twenty-five dash zero two, file number one five four nine six Nancy Drive, installation of a eight by twenty storage shed, paddock, fifty-two foot round pen, fencing, removal of three trees and relocation of existing chicken coop within the upland review area.
Can we give a training class on this thing?
We can turn the air conditioning, make it a little colder in here.
You can sit, sit, wear sweaters now.
Well, we didn't have that afterwards. We've put in lots of work, workless.
It's better than it was.
Really?
I don't think it's quite fair.
I don't know about that.
Well, do you remember the last time?
Yeah.
Turn the air conditioning off?
No, I think you're right. I think that's still being automatically overridden.
You think?
They told us that.
It's set for, it's set for eighty for the last three hours.
And it's still cranking a lot.
I'm kinda jealous.
Be perfect for your shirts.
Okay, uh, Jim Stewart, Flex Engineer, Licensed Surveyor, property owner, six Nancy Drive, here for a, uh, as of right, say, application as of right determination. Uh, for the record, um, have provided a as of right permit, as of right application, a memorandum of law discussing, um, as of right activities, a project, uh, report, the activities, uh, as well as, I, I copied the sections of the, the, of the inland wetlands training regulations, a wetlands delineation report and a site plan, revision forty-five. Uh, the, the plan has changed only in that last time, it was presented lastly, only that James Mayo, um, noticed that the silt fence around this berm has been, uh, fell off, so I added that back on. Briefly, uh, the application includes a construction of a twenty by fourteen running horse shed outside of the wetlands, uh, I put up with review area backed up for a second. The wetlands are in the rear of the property, uh, flagged, um, one through ten, um, and there's a stone walled, um, from significant portion of it. Um, so anyway, we're gonna put a paddock in and associated fencing, uh, around the property. Uh, there is a eighty by twenty shed within the upland review area. And there is also a, a chicken coop that is permitted chicken coop in, in, in this location that's partially above the septic system. Uh, that is gonna get, uh, either relocated, uh, or maintained in its existing location. Zoning does not like, uh, the proposed location that is right here because now they've changed the regs, so they have to be uh, behind the house. Um, so I've got a corner lot that would need to be put, uh, back in this area. It's the only area where I can get it fifty or twenty-five, fifty, excuse me, fifty feet off the property lines. It's the only spot that works, uh, that's not in the center of the lawn or on the septic system or in the front yard, which doesn't work.
If, if you didn't have Wheeler Road to the side.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't really. And that's on my list of things to do is to go and, and request a zone, a zone, zoning amendment, text amendment to change the regulations for side yards.
Well, it's front yard regulation is the issue. We can't designate it.
Well, I could if I changed the.
Have you changed the definition?
Changed the definition to my, pick my front yard. In any case, also providing a, uh, installing a fifty-two foot diameter round pen, ride the horses and, and train the horses. Um, what else? We could show you some lovely pictures. Have any horses? Probably a lot too. And apparently you need to because they are herd animals and they like to be around other horses.
Have company.
And they're bonded right now, so. Let's just start with these.
Nice time to talk about removing a couple of trees because they're leaning.
We're a renamed her, uh. Forgot her name. It'll come to me. Athena. Goddess of war because she's such a hisser. Um, there's a round pen where we are, so that cousin what it is, it's, it's just lays on the ground. It doesn't go in the ground. It's all linked together and so that's what keeps it shaped. Um, there's one of the trees that we're looking to remove that's leaning over the, um, the existing house. There's the other tree that's near the neighbor's property that's rotting and, and, uh, it's a bastard, so I probably won't take it down, but maybe. And, and there's the other tree that's completely dead right here. There's a typical shot of the fence that we'll probably be putting in. Um, and there's another round pen. And there's a, there's a, kind of what they, what the running horse shed will look like. So. What else to show you? Any questions?
What do you do with all the manure?
Uh, the town used to, used to pick it up or not pick it up, but used to be able to take it to the, to the landfill. Apparently they don't do that anymore. So, uh, there are companies that'll drop off a dumpster and you put it in there, you, you turn it and I'll probably look to see if I can give it away to people, but yeah, there's a lot of manure.
They turn it into, they turn it into mulch. Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm an organic gardener, so I'd be interested in helping you.
Do anything but dump it in the wetlands. Plus it gets naturally deposited there.
Only before you dump it in the wetlands, please. And I'll take chicken poop too. Okay, sorry. All right, so I digress.
So I have a question. Do you have any other pictures of that, that, um, tree that's closer to your neighbor's property?
Since we're talking about trees, staff did make it out there, uh, to.
I mean, sorry.
To evaluate the trees, um, and staff has no issues with those trees coming down. Uh, I, I was considering, um, adding trees, but seeing the whole area that's all heavily wooded, it didn't seem to make a whole lot of sense.
Was there beer involved?
It's, it's, I'll give you, it's a beautiful tree. You know, but the neighbor's property is, is, he got a variance years ago to, to be within the, the, uh, twenty-five foot side yard setback. So his house is, is probably fifteen feet off the property line. And, and the tree is, the tree's beautiful, but it's, it's got a big, uh, you know, rotten, rotten section down the center of it. So.
High risk.
Well.
Okay.
It might be there forever. Then again, it might.
Come down next weekend.
Come down tomorrow. We had one that was way better than that and, and I, that's good forever and it just fell right over, so. See. I'll pull that up. Not a very good picture, but there's, there's all the rotting going there and it's all, it's all dead inside, so. And it's big, so. I'm looking forward to paying to have it taken down.
Okay.
Any other question?
Oh, and just, just for, just for future, um, being completely open here, at some point I'm gonna come back and request for a, for a garage to be put in, in here. So I hope that that'll happen someday in, in the winter or the spring.
But not part of the application.
Not part of the application.
Right. Okay.
Uh, for the record, you did a great job on the, uh, on the application, putting in all sorts of great information that I really appreciate, Kim.
I'd be good to educate you like I educated myself.
You guys don't get as a bright permit selection.
It's clear to me that, uh, can I make a motion to accept?
Motion to accept I P U twenty twenty-five as, as of right determination.
Yeah, you're making a determination that isn't as a right use unfair.
Any conditions you would want?
It's not.
You can.
Basically what you're doing is you're releasing inland wetlands ability to actually regulate it. So you're saying that the use that he is putting forward as it relates to the horses and whatnot are actually an agricultural use, which is defined in a very specific way. Again, I believe he outlined most of this in the regulations. So you're making the determination that what he's proposing to do is an as of right use and therefore is not subject to inland wetland regulations.
Okay, powerful, powerful regulations, amazing.
On review of the regulations, I find that I would like to make a recommendation to accept as is.
We have a motion to.
That's a motion.
Yeah. To accept it.
As, as of.
As of right. You have a second? You have a second? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous? Motion passes or? Passes, whoever it is. Okay. Uh, moving on to general discussions, um, you have minutes for seven twenty-three twenty-five?
I didn't see any conflicting issues with seven twenty-three twenty-five. So I don't, unless anybody else did, I think they look okay.
Okay. And we need a motion to, uh, accept the minutes? Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept the minutes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stewart to accept the minutes. Do we have a second?
A second.
And has got to it first.
Yep. All favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous. Uh, all right, so then moving on to the meeting schedule. Um, looks like we have an adjustment for November.
November, uh, in November, uh, this, it, our meetings are normally the second Wednesdays of every month and the second Wednesday falls on November eleventh, which is Veterans Day. So we pushed that to, um.
Eighteenth?
The third Wednesday, which is November eighteenth.
Which is a, like a week.
It's still a Wednesday.
Thanksgiving, right?
Right, because if we pushed it further, then we're getting into Thanksgiving.
Right. There's no changes since, uh, since it was developed.
No.
Yes.
Yes, correct.
All right, so do we need a motion or I just need to sign this?
We need a motion.
Okay, uh, we need a motion to accept the adjusted twenty twenty-six regular meeting schedule? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjust the November meeting schedule for twenty twenty-six.
Motion? Do we have a second?
Never seconded, so good. On my birthday. I got a meeting on my birthday.
You gotta second it.
We have a second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ben, did I hear an aye?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, yes, on your desk. Oh.
Okay. Matter?
That's the one we need a signature on. You don't like the highlight.
Uh, and then lastly, we have a bylaws discussion. Um, do we want to wait till we have all the commissioners for this or start and then finish it later or?
I. Well, it's up to you. Uh, I did.
Give us the highlights and we'll, we can see what if we want, so.
Okay, so it's just that, uh, our order of business in our bylaws are not lined up with the way we, the order in which we have been conducting. So there are a couple of changes to this that we'd like to make.
It's just like housekeeping stuff?
It's housekeeping stuff, exactly. Uh, approval of minutes, we always do at the end, so we'd like to put that down underneath the I W C agents report.
Right, O, yeah.
Yep.
He goes to O, yeah.
He goes to O. Um, we used to have subdivision report, reports and referrals. We don't do them often, but they belong over here in F.
We just never know where to put them. And I'm like, how do you guys not have a place to put them? But you actually did, you did.
We did at one point and it dropped off, so we want to add it back in.
Okay.
Um, enforcement under H.
Oh, right.
Okay, so, so under H, there's enforcement, but enforcement, we really kind of do with the agent activities. So we'd like to move enforcement from up top down to underneath agent activities.
Well, no, no, the way it's in the bylaws, it's twice. So it's under H and then it was again under N. And what they used to do, I believe, is any enforcement that required an applicant to come and attend, where there was like a full discussion, they would need an I W R remediation with this commission. They put them there so that they weren't waiting until the very end of the meeting. And just enforcement updates, so non-public administrative, so just some administrative stuff that he was handling on his own to give you his update list like he does with his I W C activities report, that was put there. So they had enforcement in two locations. One, where the public was coming or the applicant was coming or the, you know, accuser, whoever was had the violation would be here. And then another one at the end. I don't, I don't think we have an opinion. Do you have an opinion? I don't know if to overkill or not. It's what, it really, it's what you guys um, want to do or think is appropriate.
Are we suggesting we keep it the way it is or are we saying we want to add, to have it in two places?
That's the question. That's the question. We have it in two places in the bylaws, but we really send, you know, in our agendas, it's, it shows up in one place.
Cause you can see it's before deliberations. So it's like, it's as part of like, uh, the applicant, the acceptance, the applications, the public hearings, and then there would be enforcement relating to the public and then you would go into deliberations. Um, cause if you needed to vote on anything associated with the enforcement activity, you'd move that actual vote into deliberations, whereas now we just kind of do it all at the enforcement at the end.
Could we possibly use, uh, I? Could we possibly use, uh, I, keep I in there, other? And just use as, as, as our, uh, you know, uh, infrequent activities that occur and throw it in there with that? Well, why do we have to get rid of other? It just, you know?
Well, only because other also shows up under general discussion.
It's under...
So we want to get rid of the, we want to get rid of other because it's duplicated.
I get that, but you still, I still wanted a junk drawer or something in case something comes in that's not, you know?
Well, we have it in H.
Okay.
Other's still there, so.
You have like an as of right.
So other under I and other under O is, is, it's just redundant, so, uh, you know?
General, yeah, general discussion, other minutes, that, that's really H. Right?
No, because you don't want to put that before deliberations.
Oh, well, well, I'm looking at what our current agenda has. It says H, general discussion. And now it's over here, it says one under O.
Yeah, it's under O because we have so many more categories in the bylaws.
We're not showing it now, though. On the agenda.
Yeah, because the agenda does not follow the bylaws. That's the issue.
That's the whole issue.
That's the whole issue.
Okay, but that's my question. Do we, do we want them to marry each other?
Yes, that's what we're doing. You know, we're updating the bylaws to be what you want them to be. So then we'll update the agenda.
Unless you wanted the agenda to follow the bylaws and then we'll have to move the minutes up top.
No, 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 I'm fine. I'm so worried. I'll make sure I understand. So the next agenda that gets published, instead of it saying H, general discussion decisions, other, it's going to say O, general discussion, other minutes, right?
I mean technically, yes, but if we get rid of C...
It'll get re...
So you're going to redo these? Okay, that's fine. But all, whatever, whatever we agree to here is going to show up on here.
Correct.
That's fine.
Correct.
Making sure I understand what we're doing here. Sorry.
Um, I would only suggest that we add, and it doesn't necessarily have to be here, but we add a little tickler on our agenda to make sure that we're up and running and it's being recorded. Just as a, just as a, you know, I know it's gonna, never gonna happen again, but it's happened a few times over, over ten years. And there was one time with that big sand pit that it happened. And we were here for how many hours? You guys...
Five hours.
Five hours? And that was painful to do that again.
Right, so it did say last week, record it.
It said recording.
Yeah, I don't think this needs to be done on, but we can go through it afterwards. If we want to know the details of what actually...
No, I don't, I don't, I mean, it shouldn't happen. It's not a big deal. I just, I would just like some sort of a...
I, I hear it's recording and then, then I know where it shows on. That's why, so, but I understand what you're saying.
And in, in your opening statement, doesn't it, don't you ask, is the recording on? No.
No.
No, it's just a little voice. Right, right, right. Maybe you should put that in there.
Is it recording on after I hear him saying recording on?
Yes. Is the Zoom working? Is the recording on? It's, it's, you know, is...
Is anybody out there?
Is there anybody out there? And if there's nobody out there, then we got to wonder. Because there's always somebody.
We knew, we knew we were not on last meeting. We knew something was...
I think we did know something wasn't working. We just sort of pulled the plug.
Right, we can talk about it more detail. Okay.
So...
So, so question is the enforcement. Do you want the enforcement in two locations? Do you want it in one location? If yes to one location, do you, do you want...
I think we should get rid of the people as fast as we can.
I was going to say, can we move, can we move it to a completely different letter? Can we put it in the, in the beginning so that...
Yeah, that's, the way the bylaws are written, it's in two locations. There's one right before deliberations, which again, the, and the whole point of that is to get the people in and out. And then it occurs a second time under the agent activities report. And that's just for him to be able to give an update of what's going on.
It can be, I'm sorry.
So two locations.
I like the two locations because if there is somebody that knows here, let's get them in, move them on.
Make a decision, so.
We might need to make a...
And no need to wait around for you to talk about all the other stuff.
So...
Got it.
Okay. Good?
Good.
All right.
That stays there, that stays there. Oh, and the time extensions added on, uh, so we wanted to add a category for, uh, time extensions because that does come up from time to time.
Be very specific, hey, we're adding a time extension to this particular application. That, that, that's fair.
And we were good with moving the minutes down to O, which will be whatever letter it turns out to be. But moving the minutes down to the end like we've been doing it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do we need a motion?
Need a motion.
As, just like a...
These are the only changes?
Those are the only changes that we're trying to do, yes.
Uh, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as discussed?
The...
The bylaws.
I'm sorry, the bylaws.